Also now five o'clock, so I'd like to call the meeting to order. Clerk Segrist, can we call the roll?
Trustee Anthony.
Present.
Foster.
Good evening.
Graham Hudek.
Good evening.
Clerk Segrist is in attendance. Treasurer Slavens.
Good evening.
Trustee Snyderman.
I'm here tonight.
And Supervisor Williams.
Good evening. A call for adoption of the agenda as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Those in favor by roll call.
Anthony.
Yes.
Foster.
Hi.
Graham Hudek.
Yes.
Segrist, aye. Slavens?
Aye.
Snyderman?
Aye.
And Williams.
Hello. Yes. Yes. All right, now we've got basically a single item this evening, which is a presentation, the audit by Plant Moran. Wendy, do you want to make some opening remarks and then?
Yeah. Sure. Thanks, Pat. First, I want to thank the auditors and thank my staff for doing an audit under this challenging time. I would venture to guess that we were probably the first audit that they had that had to be done completely remotely. Our audit started, I believe, the Monday that everything shut down. So the audit typically entails looking at a bunch of documentation to verify our expenditures, our revenue. There was a lot of work that had to be done by both Sarah and Carolyn. Normally, we have staff who is working, but we were shut down and we didn't have staff reporting to work. So there's a lot of scanning and trying to get the audit done. So I really appreciate all the work that Sarah and Carolyn and the patience with the auditors and working through this time. So it was really challenging. They did a great job getting the auditors, from my perspective, all the work. We'll hear from the auditors also, but I want to thank everybody for their time and I would like to turn it over to Alicia.
All right. Thank you, Wendy. I completely echo your sentiments there that we got this done during a pandemic. It was a challenging time and we also appreciate the effort on your part and your team's part to help us get to the finish line here, make sure we can still get the township's financial statements reported on time with the state of Michigan. So if I could just take a step back, of course, I want to thank the township board, township supervisor for having us here this evening. We always appreciate the time to go over our audit results. With me is Melanie Crowther, who is the manager of the township's audit. She's actually a Canton resident and has been working on the audit for many years. And I am the partner, as many of you know, I've been working with the township for many years as well. So what we wanted to do is go over our audit results and cover some financial highlights and then certainly take any questions or have any dialogue that you'd like to have as a group. So I believe in your packets for this evening, you should have three documents pertaining to the item, actually maybe four now. So you would have a PDF copy of the CAFER. I know we usually have print to hand to you at the meetings and so I think everything's been done electronically now. But within the CAFER, which your team does prepare, is our audit opinion. That's really the only part of the CAFER that belongs to Plant Moran. So that would be the first deliverable. We also have a single audit report, which is the report out on the federal expenditures of a township. And so that is something that is required every year as well. We have our audit letter, which summarizes the results of our audit and also he has some other informational items included. And then finally, we subsequently provide a slide deck here, which is up on the screen now and we're going to use that to cover the financial highlights rather than going through the full CAFER. So if I could for a moment, just go back to the CAFER opinion, the CAFER audit. So the township, you would have received an unmodified opinion. Again, it is the highest level of assurance you can receive on the set of financial statements. It's what you should expect, frankly. And it tells the readers of your financial statements that they're both reliable, they're materially correct, and that they comply with the rules and regulations that the township needs to follow. In this year's letter, we do have what is called an emphasis of matter paragraph, which are certain things that we need to draw the reader's attention to. And so we do that in the opinion letter and there's two items that show up there this year. The first is that the township did adopt a new accounting standard that was required. Actually, it turned out, as your team was pretty much done implementing, that the GASB decided that if you wanted, you could defer it, but your team wanted to add it and adopted since the work was already done. The biggest change for the township and really for most municipalities going forward is that the OPEB retiree health funding vehicle, the MERS retiree health vehicle, was not on your books. And now, just like pension, it has kind of come on your books as part of your fiduciary fund. And so you see that liability reported there versus just in the footnotes. The second item really draws the reader's attention to the fact that the financial statement has considered the impact of the pandemic subsequent to the township's year end and through the date of the financial statement issuance. So that shows up on, I should have wrote it down here, I apologize. We don't need to go over it today, but I just want to make, if you want to make a note, that shows up on page 39 of the CAFER. It's a really long document. And what the accounting rules say is that when you issue a set of financial statements, you have to consider if anything has happened subsequent to the balance sheet date that would significantly impact the reader's view of those financial statements as reported at year end. You know, so any significant declines in your balance sheet and your revenue streams, you know. So all things pandemic would be relevant, right? So I don't think there's been any public accounting firm who hasn't issued a financial statement in recent months. It hasn't addressed this issue in the financial statements. And what it really tells the reader is that the township was not immune to the pandemic. No one really has been. There has been disruption to your business. You have been required to close facilities. There are declines in revenues that have been experienced and that will continue to be experienced. And then it also talks about what you've done to address that. And so you've mitigated some of that disruption, some of that revenue decline by reducing expenses and making other changes. And you'll continue to do that. And then it also talks about where you do have significant investments, for example, in your pension and OPEB plans, that those likely would have experienced some declines in the market as we've seen over the past few months. So it's really just full disclosure on kind of what's happened since the balance sheet date. So those are the most significant items. The rest of what we're going to cover in the CAFER will do through the slide presentation. The single audit, the federal awards audit, that is, it's pretty straightforward. So as in the past, the CDBG continues to be the major program that we test, just due to its significance. And just no issues there. Your team does a great job with that. Everyone's well aware of the rules and regulations, you know, full compliance. And again, an unmodified opinion without exception for the federal awards audit. And then the audit letter, which we deliver every year, is then to summarize the results of our audit in terms of if we had any issues or findings, we're in internal control perspective, if we had any recommendations. Those would be included in there. And then also, we do have some required areas that we have to report out to the board. So I'm happy to report that, again, this year, the township did not have any findings, no material weaknesses, no significant deficiencies, no internal control deficiencies that were identified through the audit process. That is not very common, so I want to emphasize that that's a tremendous audit result. Most often, we do identify something that we need to communicate, some deficiency for an organization your size. So very well done and kudos to your team for those results. Also in that letter, so even if we don't have any findings or deficiencies, we do have some areas that we're required to report out on. And so the most significant items in that letter are the two items that I've already mentioned. One is the pandemic and again, the implementation of a new standard because they're required to show up there again. The other, I'd say, most significant item in terms of the content of the letter is just that we have to make sure the governing body understands numbers that are significant estimates in your financial statements. And those really haven't changed over the past several years. So those are really what you've seen in the past, both in the pre and post audit communication. From there, if we had any disagreements or issues or anything like that, we'd need to make you aware. We did not. The final item that I'll mention from the audit results letter is that if we did have any, if we identified any financial statement corrections that were required to be made, we would have to tell you. So we did not identify any of that required correction in your financial statements, but we did identify a few items that we agreed with management, we could sort of pass on, that they technically weren't correct, but that they were not misleading to the reader by omitting them and not correcting them. And so those items are included here as an attachment because, again, we are required to make the board aware of those. So that's really a high level. Within the financial statement results, there's a second letter that really is just informational item. And most of it are things pertaining to, you know, things that your team will be working on, accounting standards, state requirements, you know, for chart of accounts and things like that, that we just really wanted to make you aware, but we weren't planning to cover at length at this meeting. With that, unless there's any questions on anything that I just covered and I realize I covered quite a bit in a short period of time, but trying to be sensitive to the environment we're in and not taking up too much time here, we'll go ahead and move on to the slide presentation. Okay.
Okay.
There are no questions, I'm going ahead and turn it over to Melanie to walk us through the graphs, please.
Thank you. Similar to Alicia, I'm going to cover very high level financial highlights. But stop me at any point in time if you have any questions or requests for additional information. Just knowing that this is the virtual environment, that we were going to keep this relatively high level and these results are from December 31st, 2019, which with the pandemic, obviously, some of these numbers have shifted a little bit. So we figured we would keep this relatively high level and also give some future thinking items within the graphs. So looking at the first graph, it's really looking at the uncombined, so that's the budgetary basis general fund revenues over the last five years. So as you can see, general fund revenue actually increased for December 31st, 2019. It went up to 29 million. And really, the increase happened in both your state sources and your property taxes, which are the township's largest source of revenues. Those increased by 733,000 combined and that was a total increase in revenue of about $1 million. Your other categories are very similar to previous years and really no new categories amongst your revenues. We're going to look at property taxes and state shared revenue and a couple more graphs, but just wanted to highlight those two items. So this next graph you've seen over the years, we presented a few times, that talks about the lag between the assessment date and really the budget year, when those property tax values will come through. Really, the key takeaway this year that we actually wanted to more look at was with the pandemic, there's probably going to be some impact to property tax values. What that is at the moment, we can't tell. It's too early to tell. But if you think about it, with the assessment date happening multiple years before your budget year, it's really going to be a couple of years before you see the impact of the pandemic on property tax values. So when you're looking at budgeting, currently, we're still showing a projected increase in property tax values. And that is due to the fact that the assessment date has already occurred. So you're probably looking at more likely budget year 2022 and possibly 2023, when you really might see the impact of the pandemic. And for the township, the increase in property tax values has been, over the last couple of years, has been more new development versus a large increase in your property tax values, which a lot of other communities have not seen that new development. So they have not seen this trend. But if you remember from a few years back, once those property tax values do decrease, it'll take a couple of years before you start to see those increases again. So the pandemic will have some impact on property tax values. What that is, it's too early to tell, but it will be a couple of budget years before you see that impact. Also looking at state shared revenue, so this graph is done on the state's fiscal year. So the state has a fiscal year of September 30, 2019 on here. And we did show an increase of about 5% in state shared revenue for fiscal year 19. Again, the pandemic will impact state shared revenue. We did recently pull down the information from the state's website related to that fiscal year 20 projection. Unfortunately, the latest information was not updated since May 15th. So at the moment, it's looking like a 1% decrease in state shared revenue. But just knowing what's going on at the state, the fact that they need to look into balancing the budget, sales tax that we all have known from the pandemic, that that has significantly decreased, that there probably will be a more significant decrease than the 1%. But based on the current information that we could find from the state's website, we are projecting a 1% decrease for fiscal year 20. But knowing that probably is going to be a more significant decrease. Switching focus from revenues, looking at expenditures. I do want to report that all expenditures were within budget line items. There was no overages on budget, so we were not required to disclose anything related to budget overages. And expenses actually decreased from last year. So expenses went down by $2 million to 27.6 million. And really, that decrease was from a decrease in the transfers to other funds. That was offset against a $2 million increase in general fund, general government expenditures. Now, that increase in general government expenditures was due to the board-approved additional pension contribution, which we'll look at in a couple of slides later, but just knowing that really that's the reason for that increase in general government, as it does look a little out there with being 10.2 million compared to 8.2 million last year. So without that additional pension contribution, general government expenditures would have been in line with previous years. Looking at fund balance, so fund balance in this graph we show is the unassigned fund balance. So that is the fund balance that has not been legally restricted by third parties or designated by the township for a specific purpose. So unassigned fund balance for 2019 was 5.6 million, which is about 20% of your current year expenditures. That is above the township's policy of 15%. So the township does have a policy that unassigned fund balance needs to be at least 15% of your total expenditures. So shifting from the general fund, we're looking at now township-wide pension contributions, which I did mention previously. As you can see from this graph, it looks like there's a huge spike in pension contributions for 2019. That spike is due to that board-approved additional pension contribution of 8.5 million to help fund the unfunded liability for pension. So if you took out that 8.5 million, your pension contributions would have been around 5.3 million, which would have been in line with 2018. So the township did look at the fact that there is that significant pension liability out there and chose to increase their pension contribution to try and help fund that unfunded liability. So we've talked in the previous slides mostly more about the general fund and more of the current operations. Now we're going to shift focus and really look at some of these long-term liabilities. And the township's done a great job of doing your long-term budgeting and thinking about the future and really trying to look at the current expenditures. So that way you can start to look at these long-term obligations and make the additional pension contributions to try and help decrease these liabilities. Looking at this slide and the next slide, we look at both this two significant legacy costs, which is going to be your OPEB cost, which for December 31st, 2019, it was looking at 31.5 million as your unfunded liability. And we've got it broken out by employee group. And then for pension, your liability at 123119 with a measurement date of 123118 is $52.9 million. With most of the unfunded liability, in your next slide, we'll show kind of the allocation percentages. So if you can see, public safety does make up the majority of those unfunded liabilities. And that's due to the township allocates the liability based on the actual contributions and looks at the multipliers, and public safety do have higher multiplier and more employees in the plan. So that is why those have a significantly higher allocation of those liabilities.
Melanie, if I can just speak up real quick, too. That $52 million pension liability was before our $8.5 million pension contribution, which was done in 2019. We have not received our actuarial valuation from MERS yet for the year ended 2031, 2019. So hopefully, we'll come down that liability.
Correct. And then if there's, I'm going to turn it back to Alicia to give some closing remarks.
Great. Thank you, Melanie. So this just really summarizes where the township was, sort of an overview at year end. And the message is really consistent with what it's been before, that really the township has positioned yourself to maintain solid financial health. And so you entered this pandemic in a good place, right? Which is important because you spend time planning for the future and you plan for a rainy day. And then when it happens, you're better positioned to respond and react to it. So this just highlights the things the township has continued to be diligent about doing to address legacy costs and issues, but also position yourself to maintain a solid financial condition. So then we fast forward to the next slide, which is just a couple of bullet points around, you know, here's where you were at year end. You know, you're in the strong financial condition and then we all go into this pandemic and what does that mean? And what has that meant for the township? So a lot of this is just really recapping what you're aware of, what you've been discussing as a board, with management, with the finance team, about lost revenue, disruptions to business, potential impact on property taxes in the future. You know, when we think about what this all means for our municipal clients and the conversations we're having, I mean, a couple of things come to mind. So one is, you know, it's a positive thing that you kind of entered into this in the way that you did. And so you have fund balance. And so it's really a balance between, we've got the safety net and we planned for a rainy day and the rainy day is here, by God. You know, think of your household, right? All of a sudden, maybe your paycheck gets cut, a lot of people experience that. You end up on unemployment, you're getting less revenue and so you got to pull from the savings account. Well, you can do that for a little while, but you can't live off your savings account for a long time. And so it's the same thing here, you can rely and that's why you have reserves. So to the degree that you need to rely on some of those reserves, you have it there, but that's on a long-term plan. And you're aware of that, which is why it's important to continue to evaluate the impact of the revenue declines, the ongoing disruptions, a closure of operations, and what that means and continue to adjust the expenditure side of it as you've already done. And so I think really the most significant takeaway is that in an environment with so much uncertainty for all of us, it's going to be critically important to continue to revisit your financial projections regularly. Because what we think we know now and the assumptions we can make today, based on the best available information, could very well change tomorrow and certainly will change in a month. And so I think just recognizing sort of how fluid of an environment we're in and how that's going to translate to a lot of volatility in the budget process. It's not something I think most of us are used to, but I think it's important to just acknowledge that and be open to working through it and continuing to revisit and make those decisions as more information becomes available and as things change. So I think that's really one of the takeaways that we want to leave everyone with. With that, I would like to open it to discussion or if you want to have some dialogue around the pandemic or anything else. We'd love to do that now. We'd like to spend the time with the board as you see fit. And so love to hear from you about what's on your mind or what questions you might have for us.
Are there any trustee questions or further explanation they're looking forward to this evening? Is that Steve? Steve's got your hand up. Steve, go ahead.
Thank you. Great job from both sides. Another, I don't think I've ever had a qualified, or whatever you would call it, when there were issues in my seven or eight years. So that's good to hear. So just a couple of questions. The chart on fund balance went by quickly and I was trying to do the math in my head. But it seemed like when you did your two, when you compared the revenues to the expenses. Yeah, keep going back. So this is expenses, expenditures, 27. It seemed like we should have, and it wasn't a 29 for the revenues? But it seemed like our fund balance only went up a little bit. So I'm sure it's right, I just don't understand it. Like on the previous chart, it's 29 million maybe for this year, the revenues?
I think this is revenue versus expenditures perhaps, yeah. So the revenue in 2019 was the 29 figure and then the expenditures is 27. So you added about 1.8 million to your fund balance in the general fund in 2019.
So is unassigned fund balance the same as fund balance? Because that doesn't seem to have gone up, the 1.9 million from?
Sure. That's a great question. Wendy, were you jumping in or did you want us to?
Yeah, I have to answer that. If you recall, a number of years ago, typically what we do is we will set aside fund balance for certain items. It's just what's called assigned fund balance, which isn't a board designation necessarily, but it helps us set aside money for things such as rainy day, like the things that are kind of happening right now, like the pandemic, to adjust it. But historically, when we do that, we set it aside to address legacy costs or capital needs. So if you look in the financial statements, and I don't know what page it's on right now, you'll see.
It's on page 69, Wendy.
On page 69.
Oh, I was going to leap right to page 69. I mean, I know the thing back.
But you're better than I am. But if you look at that, without getting into too much detail, that I'm not sure the board understands this GASB, but the GASB requires us to combine items that don't have restricted revenue sources into the general fund. So in the financial statements, the general fund consists of the summit, the community improvement fund, general fund, obviously, the cable fund. And I feel like there's one other one that's coming off the top of my head.
I think it's those three.
What is it?
I think you got the.
Is it just four of them?
Just those four.
This is four. All right. So if you were to look at that, we actually have, we added money to a future capital needs and legacy costs refunding. That balance right now is about $9 million, because we are going to use some of that to help offset our future capital in our CIP program that we have coming up, which when we get through this upcoming Tuesdays meeting, kind of where we are with the COVID, we're going to have to talk about the capital plan and what the board wants to do to move forward with that. But at the end of the day, we try to keep our general fund fund balance at around this 15%, 20% mark and figure out what we're going to do with the rest of it. And right now, we have assigned it. Doesn't mean the board's going to choose to use it this way, but we've assigned it to be used for capital and legacy costs. And if the board chooses to use that to help offset, you know, other costs that we may have, that's absolutely up to the board. That's a board decision.
So the fact that it only went up $300,000 on this chart and my dog doesn't like it either, but.
I get it.
I shouldn't be worried about that.
No, if you, and I'm happy to set some time aside to talk to you or we could talk about it as a group later. I can show it in more detail. But if you do look at page 69 in the financial statements, it'll show you the general fund and how everything in the fund balance is what it's comprised of right now. At least as of the financial statement date.
I know our budget reports show it in more details or explain it to us in a different way usually.
Right. Right.
Yeah, so maybe Wendy, to say what you said another way is most of that increase that we talked about, that 1.8 million that I mentioned, has been earmarked for other purposes versus kind of being in this category that's not designated or earmarked for anything. This is kind of everything that's left.
Okay. The only other question I had was on the attachment in the letter and those different things that you said. I think it had to do with OPEB and changes in reporting and things like that? Or is that a coincidence that that's in there? Because just because they're kind of significant numbers, like 1.9 million and 500,000.
That 1.9 million, Stephen, is the Ridge Road. The county, we had a contract with the county that they were supposed to pay us $1.9 million upon signing of that contract. And they still have not done that to this date. We still have a contract that says we've, you know, Pat's been there, we've butted heads with the county trying to tell them. They agreed to pay us this upon signing of it and they have not. So it's a matter of the timing because we have not received it. The county rules are saying now we should not have recorded that as receivable. We're still going to get it, but that's what that 1.9 million is. We have, you know, I was kind of being headstrong at this point. They owe it. They should have paid it. I'm not taking it off of my financial statement just because they're not putting it on theirs and paying it.
Gotcha. Okay. But it caused you to make me ask that question, so that.
I did. I know. I was being a little stubborn.
And the same with the OPEB thing, the 500,000, is that because of the change that you mentioned, Alicia? And the same with the OPEB thing, the 500,000, is that because of the change in, that you mentioned, Alicia?
That, that one is, that was just an issue with how the actuary report was completed for a change in experience. So, long story short, basically when, when you get a new valuation, anything that's changed from a prior report, like a prior estimate should be run through as an experience change in the year that it's done. And instead it was run through as an adjustment to the beginning balance, which you know, for how significant the, the number is overall, it was not a material, you know, 40 million dollars over, you know, 500,000, but it technically wasn't handled properly. And so we just agreed to just pass on it versus having the actuary redo it or having your team rework that number. So that's what that is.
Great. Thanks. Great job.
Additional questions? Emery? Yeah, go ahead, Emery.
It's hard to see hands here. Thank you. Thanks for the presentation. Thank you very much for all the work that you guys did just before everything shut down. Can you go to the slide though on the pension liabilities and OPEB liabilities? I just want to verify where we are again.
This one?
Yes. So what percentage are we now funded?
You're about 60% for pension and around 42% for OPEB. But as Wendy mentioned, that pension number doesn't include the additional 8.5 million.
And what are we seeing in Michigan in terms of the average pension?
Yeah, that's a, that's a, that's a great question. It, it really is a mixed bag. You know, we have overall, so some, some general comments is that the funding levels, I mean, they have just come down, starting with, you know, the recession in 2008 and 2009 and the significant declines in market value that were experienced by plans at that point. And then sort of ongoing continuations with changes in assumptions and people living longer, some mortality table changes, reductions in rates of return. So there's just been a lot of factors that have caused the funding levels to come down across the board for all plans. So that would be one trend, one theme. So before, you know, pre-recession, it wouldn't be uncommon to see, you know, pension plans in the state of Michigan that were, you know, making their arc and following everything that legally required to be at 80% funding. I mean, you just don't see that as much anymore, unfortunately. So for a, a general system plan like the township has with MERS, I mean, we are seeing a lot of clients now that are struggling to stay at this 60, 70% level. So I'd say where the, where the township at is at is basically right about where the state expects you to be. So the state has put out a 60% metric for what they deem to be acceptable funding level through PA 202. And so, so that's sort of where you're at now. You're kind of just hitting that mark with, to what the state wants to see. So that, that's a, that's a good thing. I, I think for, for most folks, they want to, if you can be, you want to be higher than that. And the township, I would say would be in that category where you're trying to continue to push that. The, the challenge is going to be is that we, you know, when we talk to actuaries, everything we're hearing is that for all the additional funding and all the things that you're trying to do right to grow that funding percentage, there's a lot of factors that are going to work against you that it will continue to potentially bring it down. So there's now another new experience study, which is showing that folks in the public sector are living longer. You know, so great. That's good, right? For people who are in the public sector, you're going to have a longer life expectancy. The downside is that means more costs, you're going to be paying pension plans longer. So those new mortality tables are out and are going to be used going forward by actuaries and that will increase the liability as life expectancy increases. And, you know, most actuaries and financial advisors would also say that the long-term rate of returns are going to continue to come down. So if you're expected and projected to keep earning less on your assets, then again, you've got to put more funding in. So I, so that, that will be an ongoing, ongoing challenge for communities that are, that are well-funded and, you know, that are trying to do the right thing to keep increasing that funding.
Thank you. I know that you had also.
You wanted to add, you were, there's, there's sometimes township, township specific things that I, you know, I want to make sure I give the team an opportunity to weigh in on if I, if there's something we missed. Okay.
Wendy, do we have anything else?
She covered it.
Okay, okay. I just have one more quick question. So you had spoken about the COVID-19 and, you know, everything's fluctuating. Now the markets are going up and down, the state revenue, they're projecting cuts. Have you run any models at all in terms of if it stays at this level and we expect to improve? This is what we're looking at, decreases in state revenue or is there anybody out there that's doing that?
I, I think that, you know, so we're talking to clients and, you know, helping clients think through what modeling might look like, you know, in terms of, you know, cash flow modeling and modeling out, you know, revenue and expense line items. Many of our clients are working through that themselves. You know, we do have non-odd clients that might bring us in. I, I think right now the struggle is there's, there's just so many unknowns and the reality is there's limited, you know, opportunity to meaningfully reduce expenditures without looking at very difficult decisions. Right? So, you know, we could come in and model and say, we think sales tax may end up at X, or we think the state's going to pull X from the budget to, you know, from this discretionary portion of state share revenue. Well, it is a big fat guess. And, you know, I do think that part of our responsibility as finance professionals is to infect guests. Maybe you do a worst case scenario, best case scenario and something in the middle, right? Just so you can kind of have a feel for how you might react. But then when it comes to what do we do on the other side? You know, you, that's, those are going to be difficult management decisions. And a lot of that often comes down to, you know, things with workforce and, you know, wages, things like that, benefits. So, so, you know, we're, we're available to help if our clients need our help. I believe your team is already running their own models and projection and is updating that.
We are. Yes, thank you. That's the, Wendy's been working behind the scenes of the 13 for weeks. And we are putting together month-to-month forecasts based on the current operations. And that's going to be, what's going to be presented to you next week is the modeling that has been done to date based on the information that we have to date. And what would typically be happening in this meeting would be, okay, good. We have this excess fund balance. Let's pay down the legacy cost by X. Let's assign this to the CIP specifically. And, and I think what the challenge for all of us is going to be in the next couple of weeks is due to the uncertainty of COVID, those, what used to be very easy decisions for us in the past, all of a sudden it would be more of a challenge because yeah, that's great that we're, we're meeting the minimum standards that the state wants for OPEB and pension. That's not acceptable to me at any level. I think we need to be at 80% as rapidly as we can be. And Wendy's put together plans to get us there, but that was pre-COVID, right? So how that, how we respond and react this year is, is a decision that we have to make as a group.
Thank you.
Yeah, go ahead, John.
Alicia, every, the last 12 years, I've always asked Mike and now you the question about the, if you were to rate the overall fiscal health of Canton Township, either an ABC, a 1, 2, 3, good, bad or indifferent, how would you rate the overall fiscal health of Canton Township at this point in time?
Sure. I was trying to remember how I answered that question last year and I couldn't. I think I may have given you a two-part answer, which is what I think I'm going to do today. And so the first part of that, if I think about sort of the township's ability to sort of manage your year-over-year budget and to manage your year-over-year health, think general fund, right? Your operations, you know, the rainy day fund, managing your budget within, you know, what revenue is available to you. I really would say the township is, you know, an A all day long, you know, like best in class for making difficult decisions along the way and being very proactive and ahead of, you know, all of these decisions so that you can position yourself and have the flexibility to do what you want to do, that you can have a flexibility and, and put money aside to fund these legacy costs on, you know, deferred capital and, and have a rainy day fund. You know, not all communities, as we know, have reserves. So I, you know, from just the, the practices that you have in place to, when I just think about your general financial health at, at year end, I, I would say, you know, all day long, you're, you're best in class. But I, but I think we can't, but we have to acknowledge that even for a community that is best in class and doing all the right things, you, you're not immune to some of the challenges that still lie ahead, right? So we just talked about a 60 and 42% funding level for a pension and OPEB despite doing all these things. And so when we look at that in terms of some of these longer-term things that you still have to deal with and you still have to finance and manage, that's probably a B, you know, it's, it's better than some. You know, it, it's probably not best in class in terms of the funding levels and where you want to be. So I would, I would knock you down a grade on, on those as you continue to try to work, you know, and to improve in those areas.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you too, Wendy. Great job.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Wherever you are.
Any additional comments, questions for Summer? Michael?
I have, oh, Michael, go.
Yeah, go ahead, Steve.
Just, I, since we've been talking about the liabilities and the transfer, Wendy, can you remind me, because I don't remember the number, $8 million transfer into payoff liabilities. I think I remember 2 million extra, something like that. And so I don't do it every day. So if you can just remind me how that, we got to that.
Yeah, we, it was 2 million from the general fund and then it was a couple million from police and fire. Each water and sewer fund paid some as well. So once, once we broke it out, because right here, we're just talking about general fund. Once you bring everybody together, it was about an eight and a half million dollar transfer. Cause really, Melanie spoke to this a little bit earlier. Police and fire make up the majority of our, of our pension costs. Some of it's easy to allocate because their, MERS breaks out the benefits based on what union you're in. So it's obvious, it's pretty easy to break out what the fire liability is from the police and we, we do an allocation basically of the mayor at TPOM and AfSCA to the different funds based on who's in there, where they retire from and whatnot. But otherwise, police and fire make up the largest portion. So therefore the largest portion of that eight and a half million dollars came from their funds.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mike, I think you were going to try to say something, but you were muted.
Yeah, no, I just, I mean, from a, you know, financial audit, satisfied obviously by everything that we, we heard today that was discussed. Love to see the, the progress made for our retirement obligations and other retirement obligations. One of my concerns is that we do annually budget for the like structural growth of the township, that we will be adding new housing stock and I believe we will see that come to an end shorter than maybe we want to or could expect to and would be. And, and so that, that, seeing into that growth is going to mean some serious challenges for, maybe not this board, but it would probably be the board after whoever gets elected in November. They're going to have to look at some really tough, really tough choices about how to maintain the financial kind of structure that, that we've built. And keeping in mind prior to the COVID epidemic, we had, we had been talking about potentially financing internally, but also externally, some severe capital improvements. And I don't know that I've seen like an asset management or a financial asset management plan that says kind of, okay, what are our 20, 30, 40-year obligations to our physical facilities? And what does that mean if you, you know, kind of depreciate that stuff? Or if you, if you, if you put that on, and I get, if you look at the true cost you got built in and when those projects are going to come up and so, you know, Canton Township, you know, I'm speaking to the board here, I think, the rest of the board anyway. We were a young community when it comes to developing suburban communities and we are seeing the development come to an end and that makes me a little, I think, more cautious when I look at exposing ourselves to borrowing. And, and, and budgets are only going to get harder is what I'm trying to say. Budgets are only going to get harder. And when we look at what we're going to take on, that's something I think we really need to consider. From a control standpoint, I, I'm very comfortable with how we operate. Our policies are fantastic. And we've, I think, done virtually everything we could do as a board. And I think that strategically, board that came before us did a substantial amount to be very responsible in how they handle the financials. So I just would challenge us to start thinking creatively about the township structure and, and our budget and, and items that are capital in nature, but don't necessarily fall inside of our budget. That's all.
And I agree a hundred percent with everything you just said, Mike. And things become, I guess, when things are good, when we have growth, a little bit of sloppiness can exist. It's just no different than a business that's profitable and growing, sales are growing. When it goes the other direction, as it will with COVID, and we see revenues decline, all of a sudden, I think things will get exposed for all of us to be considering in terms of future decision-making. I think that's going to happen and we may start seeing some of that, I don't think in the presentation next week. But if, for example, I was on a conference call today, where I think the state's targeting or projecting at $2 billion in reductions. And, and then Wayne County, some of you may or may not be aware, tried to go backwards on this year's growth program with us yesterday. The good news is, is that we're going to take away a program for us for 19. Myself and Warren were able to talk and we got it back to where it was previously agreed to the last two years. So there's going to be a lot of pressure from outside forces for us to get less. And it's going to be a tough year. It could be a battle to hold on to what we've got or what's been promised to us already. Wendy, I know is where the details on that one. But I agree. It's, 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 the future's going to be not as simple as it has been last year, that's for sure. Emery?
Thanks. And based on jumping up what you and Michael have said, that's also, you know, as we're considering the opening phases of our township, that has to be taken into consideration too. Very important to take those things into consideration is how it's going to impact us because of what we're seeing with these finances.
Exactly. Yes, that's, that is next Tuesday's meeting. Summer, Diane?
Wendy answered my question when she answered Stephen's question last time, but thank you. Great audit. Great job.
Diane, anything additional? Oh, you're muted.
Yep. Sorry about that. Yep. No, my questions were answered and this was a great presentation. Thank you. Good job, Wendy. And good job.
Thank you.
Well, if that, I think completes our, our presentation for the audit. I do appreciate it. Well done, everybody. We've got a note that just came in. We're going to set that back to the side. Don't worry about that till later. Are there any other board comments at this time?
I just want to wish all the dead a happy Father's Day.
There you go. Thank you.
Before, do we traditionally have a motion to accept?
Yes, there is a calendar item here, which is, thank you, Michael. We've got, we've seen no further discussion. We've got a request to the approval of the Township's 2019 comprehensive to accept the financial reports as presented.
So moved.
Okay. In terms of background or, okay, thank you. Was that Summer's work?
Yeah, Diane.
Thank you. Okay.
Sorry.
In, in terms of a summary, this is required by state law, what we're doing this evening. Plant Moran has performed the Township's financial audit for the fiscal year ended December 31st, 2019. The results of the audit, which are reported in Township's comprehensive annual financial report. The results of the audit, which are reported in the Township's comprehensive annual financial report, were covered in great detail. We are requesting now the board trustees receive and place on file the Township's comprehensive annual financial report. The results of this audit were presented this evening during this meeting. So if there's no further comments or questions, call for a roll call vote to accept the resolution.
Anthony?
Yes.
Foster?
Aye.
Graham Hudek?
Aye.
Seaverstein, Slavens?
Aye.
Lemon?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye. Seeing no other business before us, call for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Again.
Those who approve by roll call vote?
Anthony?
Aye.
Foster?
Aye.
Graham Hudek?
Aye.
Seaverstein, Slavens?
Aye.
Lemon?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
That concludes this, our business tonight. Everybody, job well done. Plant Moran, the entire financial team, the township, thank you. Everybody had a good night. Be safe. This ends our meeting.